I'd like to call to order the July 26, 2016, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville. And I thank everybody for being here tonight. We'll have public hearings. And any of you who are here for a public hearing on any of the items, if you would go to one of the mics on either side and give us your name and address for the record, that will give us a good start for the public hearing. First, before we start, I'd like to introduce everybody. I'm Janet Watson. I'm chairman of the Planning Commission. And I'll start on the end. If you'd introduce yourselves.
LaFrida Jordan.
Donna Hendricks.
Jenny Robinson.
Gary Whitley.
Sally Warden.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Skrimsher.
Les Tilery.
Jim McGuffey, City Planning.
And we have Claudia Anderson behind us, who is with the Legal Department and makes certain that we abide by the law as we go through this meeting. Our first item of business is adoption of the minutes from June 28, 2016. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Moved to approve.
Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are adopted. Our next item is public hearings. Item number one, Magna Carter Place, Phase Two. Is there anyone here tonight to speak regarding... Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. Thomas Nunez is going to give us the information on Magna Carter Place, and then we'll have a public hearing.
Magna Carter Place, Phase Two, is located southwest city, west of South Memorial Parkway and north of Magna Carter Place. This item is on R2 and is approximately 10.02 acres. This item was before you for originally preliminarilyed in October of 2015 for 29 lots. And they've adjusted the lots for essentially some increase of drainage.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Magna Carter Place, Phase Two? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Summer Point.
Summer Point is located northwest city, north of Capshaw Road and west of Nance Road. This item was before you for layout and preliminary in July of 2015 for 43 lots. It is on R1B and is approximately 12.81 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Summer Point? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Williams Point, withdrawn. We won't present that tonight, but if there is anyone here to make a comment on that, we will hear comments. Okay. We'll close the public hearing until further notice on that. Our next item, four, is location, character, and extent, fiber huts. We have three of them. Chase Hut, Tenth Street Hut, and Farley Hut.
At this time, I'll defer to Jason Beeson of Huntsville Utilities to present the fiber huts. We have locations of each of the fiber huts, starting with the Chase Hut.
Thank you, Jason. Is that microphone on?
Seems to be. This first location is... It's at the Payment Center, next to the Payment Center on Jordan Road. If any of y'all are familiar with that, it's Huntsville Utilities property. We're proposing the hut to be located in the picture you see there between the existing tree line and the Payment Center off the edge of the parkway. These are unmanned buildings. See the floor plan there? They have some racks for different computer equipment. And you'll notice there's a divider there. So the largest part of that is for Huntsville Utilities. The smaller area there would be a co-area for a tenant. These are approximately 24 by 30. And each one will have generator backup. So this is an example of the aesthetics of one of the huts. They are aggregate finish. I think that's the pretty standard color. So basically what the hut would look like. I think while we were talking there, we had the street view. So there's the street view for the first hut that we're talking about. This second hut, this is Tenth Street. We have an existing substation. You see the area outlined. This is the street view of the existing substation. We're proposing to place the hut inside the existing fenced area. It'd be located between the substation and the existing building in the background.
Excuse me. What is the access street for that one? Is that...
Tenth. Tenth Street.
Tenth Street.
And the final location, this is at our Farley Substation, another existing substation. You can see that there's Industry to the south. There's another substation across the street. And we're proposing to be at the south end of that existing property. There's the street view, and we'd be located there in the flat area out front.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding the fiber huts at Chase, Tenth Street, or Farley? Or have any question regarding the fiber huts? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Our next item is Cove Ballpark at Hampton Cove Booster Pump Station.
Cove Park Hampton Cove Booster Pump Station is located southeast city, south of Eastern Bypass and west of Old Highway 431. At this time, I'll defer to Chris Bryan of Tetra Tech to present the item.
What we have here is one of two booster stations that are going in line with the new Southeast Water Plant. This is the overall concept flyover for the Cove Park Station. It's going to be co-located inside of Cove Park Ball Field. The building for this site will be concrete block with a standing seam metal roof to match the existing structures on site. We've also doubled the size of this building here to give the Park Services additional storage for their equipment on site.
Is there anyone here who has questions or comments regarding the Cove Park Booster Pump Station? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Our next item is the Caldwell Booster Pump Station.
Caldwell Booster Pump Station is located southeast city, east of Highway 431 and north of Caldwell Lane. Chris Bryan of Tetra Tech will present this one as well.
This is the second of the two booster pump stations that we're putting in line to help equalize and boost pressures up through the Hampton Cove residents. This building is roughly half the size of the previous one we looked at at Cove Park. Same construction. The only difference is we would have a standard roof on this one instead of the standing seam metal roof. Inside houses two pumps. And... Just blew past the locations. Of course, the location's here on Caldwell Lane. I believe the access is off of Caldwell Lane as well.
Can you go back to the location, Thomas?
And you can get a slightly better depiction from the aerial view here. So the access point is from Caldwell Lane, and it would sit approximately right here in the property.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak or ask any questions regarding the Caldwell Booster Pump Station? Hearing no comments, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Our next item is Panavino Canopy.
This item is located central city, west of Church Street and north of Williams Avenue. At this time, I'll defer to Mark Matheny of Matheny-Gotman.
Essentially, the current patio at the Panavino Restaurant there, beside the museum, have the gates and fence.
Mark, would you... Is your mic on?
Yes. I just got it closed. The current patio has a guard rail and gates, and we're essentially just putting steel columns and a roof over that area to allow outdoor seating year-round. We are not touching the museum. It's about eight inches off the face of the museum. There'll be a little piece of flashing that just covers the gap so that we don't interfere with any of the stucco on the museum building itself.
Is there anyone who has a comment or questions regarding the Panavino Canopy? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mark. Our next item is zoning. First item under zoning is Meadows rezoning. Thomas? Oh, no. Sorry. Ashley. Ashley Nichols.
This property is approximately 7.02 acres. It's located east of US Highway 431 South and on the east side of Goose Ridge Road. This property was originally annexed and zoned in 2007. The property did and still does consist of multiple zoning designations as the original intention for the development was several different products, including multifamily. This piece in question is currently zoned to Residence 1A, which can only accommodate single-family dwellings. The current property owner would like to request that this property be rezoned to Residence 2B, which would match the adjacent zoning designation to the west.
Is there anyone here who would like to comment on the Meadows rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Seeger's rezoning. Ashley.
This property is approximately 11.48 acres. This property was originally annexed and zoned in 2006. It's located on the south side of Hardeman Road and on the east side of Seeger's Road. The property was originally zoned Neighborhood Business C1 with the intention of this being a commercial node to service this area. This property has recently been purchased by a developer, and the developer would like to make this an addition to the existing old cobblestone subdivision, which is adjacent to this property. This property will consist of single-family detached homes, which cannot be constructed under the Neighborhood Business zoning designation. So the rezoning request is to rezon this property from Neighborhood Business C1 to Residence 2 District.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Seeger's rezoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, special exception, private schools, and other childcare facilities.
This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to update some existing language within the zoning ordinance. In 1993, language was added for private schools, nurseries, kindergartens, and other childcare centers in a residential district as long as they operated as an accessory use to a permitted use, which would include a church. Anything basically other than a family dwelling, these uses are allowed to currently operate as an accessory to. This does not include any of our closed non-residential uses, which are currently permitted by right within our churches, within our districts, which would include churches, closed schools, and also governmental uses, as well as office buildings. So planning staff is proposing to add language so that those uses may be included as well. The proposed language is private schools, nurseries, kindergartens, and childcare centers in any residential district when operated in an existing non-residential structure that once housed a use allowed by right and not by variance or when operated as an accessory use to any permitted use other than a family dwelling, provided that the Department of Transportation concurs and that all property owners within 500 feet have been notified of the public hearing. This language does not change any of our existing group childcare homes that are currently permitted under residential districts. This is only to merely add an option for our non-residential uses that are permitted within residential districts.
Is there anyone here to comment regarding zoning ordinance amendment, special exception, private schools, and other childcare facilities? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is the Matthews zoning.
This property is approximately 29.17 acre. This is newly annexed land located south of Hobbs Island Road and north of Bill Matthews Road. This property was annexed in June and became effective on July 1st. The property owner would like to construct a single-family detached subdivision on this property. And the planning staff would like to propose that the zoning designation for this property be placed as Residence 2A, which is consistent with the adjacent subdivision, the Butler Basin Neighborhood.
Is there anyone here to comment regarding the Matthews zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, undeveloped lot, and that's been withdrawn. If there is anyone here who came tonight specifically to make comment on that, we would hear that at this time. Okay. Hearing no comment, that public hearing is closed. Pardon? I'm sorry. We'll leave it open for when, if, that amendment comes back. So we proceed to the Planning Commission portion of the agenda. And I'm going to ask Kelly Skrimsher if she will give us the subdivision committee report.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
The subdivision committee met July 20th at 7:30 in the morning here in City Hall and has the following recommendations. The Harrisburg Estates, Phase Two, a re-subdivision of Tract One of Harrisburg Estates. This is presented for final approval on 22 lots.
Is it in order for final approval? Jim?
Yes, ma'am, it is. It's in order with improvements to be installed by July 6, 2017, and sidewalks to be installed by July 6, 2018.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Heritage Brook subdivision, Phase Three, a re-subdivision of a portion of Tract Two of Heritage Brook subdivision, Phase One. This is also presented for final approval on 54 lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, ma'am, it is. In order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by July 21, 2017.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Iredale subdivision, Phase Three, a re-subdivision of Tract One and Common Area A of Iredale subdivision, presented for final approval on 27 lots.
Is this one in order for final approval?
Yes, ma'am. It's in order with improvements in sidewalks to be installed by July 12, 2016.
Move for approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Magna Carter Place, Phase Two. The committee recommends relayout and re-preliminary approval on 29 lots.
Move to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Summer Point. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 43 lots.
Move to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location, character, and extent. Fiber huts, the Chase Hut, the Tenth Street Hut, and the Farley Hut. A public hearing was held tonight, and I'd like to move to consolidate the three fiber huts into one action item. It's a motion.
Okay. So before we proceed with your motion, I guess we'll need a second too. But I think Gary Whitley's going to be recused on this. Gary Whitley will be recused. Okay. And we have a motion to consolidate. A second. Any discussion? All in favor of consolidation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Cove Ballpark at Hampton Cove, a booster pump station.
Wait a minute. What... We have...
Now we need to go back and vote.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Any discussion? Now we're on... We've consolidated. Now we're on approving of the fiber huts. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Cove Ballpark at Hampton Cove, the booster pump station. A public hearing was held, and the committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Caldwell Booster Pump Station. A public hearing was also held. The committee recommends approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you put the site plan back up for that? This... I assume this is Huntsville Utilities' own property?
I think it is a private property, but they have an easement agreement to put the pump station on this particular property.
Okay. And is there... Am I seeing a fence around the building there? Or is that part of the property that's been given as an easement?
I think that is a part of the property that's given as an easement. The structure has a door and locks on them, but I don't think this particular structure has any fencing around it.
And it... So this building's going to sit in the middle of this lot, visible from the highway, and there's no other screening around it? Do we know what the anticipated use of the rest of the property is? Is there any plans for development of it?
Currently, we have no assessment of the anticipated use.
It's on C4.
Yes, it's on C4.
It would be a larger highway business, commercial development.
That could screen this building at some point.
This is located on the back portion of the property, closer to the floodway or the creek area. So there will be buildings and parking lots in front of this building as the site develops.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Panavino Canopy. A public hearing was held, and the committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion?
I do have one question. What material did you end up deciding on?
He's still got two different prices between the polycarbonate panels and a metal roof. And if it's metal roof, it'll match the museum, of course.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Our next item is the zoning committee report. Les Tilery, would you give us that report and recommendations?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning committee met on July 13, 2016, and the following are our recommendations. Meadows rezoning. The public hearing was held.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is Seeger's rezoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the zoning ordinance amendment, special exception, private schools and other childcare facilities. It's to amend Article 92, Board of Adjustment, Section 92.5, Powers and Duties, subsection 92.5.3, permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection 92.5.3 to update language concerning private schools and other childcare facilities. Public hearing was held this evening.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have one question. This is... Could be a church, for instance, a church property that had operated a private school or a childcare facility, but no longer was operating as a church.
Correct.
Is that one of the...
Correct. Currently, under the existing language, you can only have these uses if they are operating in accessory to. Now, this will give you the option to either be a standalone in a permitted use within our residential district or still be an accessory to a church or a private school or any other use.
And it could be used as any sort of group home? Would that be...
This does not pertain to the group home language. It still remains the same.
Okay. So this only is for day schools?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Currently, our private schools, which we've had the largest number of variance requests within the past probably six to seven years, they're currently only permitted under our... Excuse me. Under our general business C3 district. So the eight, nine-plus schools we have operating in the city, which includes Westminster, Madison Academy, Randolph, all of those operate under a variance because they are not permitted by right under the districts that they are currently in, as well as many of our daycare and other childcare facilities operate under a use variance. We get multiple requests on a monthly basis for these type of uses. Some aren't able to receive a variance because they can't prove that they have a use hardship since many try to move into uses that are currently permitted under the zoning designation but are no longer operating as those uses, such as our churches and our closed schools. With a close example being Providence Classical over in the East Clinton... Former East Clinton Elementary School. It also operates on a variance as well. But prior to the school... But prior, prior to the school, to the Providence Classical moving in, that school just pretty much sat vacant.
So, because it's a, because it's a, even though that was used as a, as a school, as a public school, the private school that's currently located there could only locate there on a, with a variance?
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is correct. Only churches, schools, and other governmental or municipal uses can locate within our residential districts, as well as some office buildings. And we also have hotels and motels that can locate within our Residence Two B district, but these other uses are not permitted by right.
But this would, this would go in a Residence One or Residence One A district, as well as Residence Two B, where hotels and motels can operate. Okay, the, I guess the only other question that I have regarding that is sometimes, I mean, if it's a church, you have, you know, limited uses, maybe some daily drop, drop-offs of children and, and pickups, but, but a church that's no longer being used as a church could present a specific problem in traffic on a daily basis. Will that be being looked at?
That's something that staff can evaluate, as well as the Board of Zoning Adjustment. They aren't required to grant these special exceptions. It's merely just another option where you don't have to prove the hardship, but they can approve or deny these requests, as well as they can put any other specific conditions on top of an approval. And then the applicants would be required to come back on an annual basis. And if they found that there is an issue with traffic, noise, extracurricular activities, things like that, they can at any time revoke the special exception.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, oh, Les, I'm sorry.
Item four is the Matthews Zoning, public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is zoning ordinance amendment, density controls. Amend Article twenty-seven, Village Business C six, District, Section twenty-seven point two, density controls by amending subsection twenty-seven point two to update language concerning rear yard requirements. Committee recommends that the Planning Commission set a public hearing for August twenty-third.
Recommend to set a public hearing.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Les. Our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Jim McGuffey, would you give us that in?
Yes, ma'am. Staff recommends the invocation of items one through six. So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, and that's the final item on our agenda. Unless there's some further business to come before the Planning Commission, we will stand adjourned.